This conference will now be recorded.
So we're going to get started by amending our agenda at the beginning and then we'll stand for pledge. We're just going to move our work session to the end of the meeting instead of the beginning of the meeting, since we have so many guests with us this evening. That way they don't have to come quite as late of the night. So if I could just get a motion to amend the agenda to move the work session to the end.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to make the work session at the end of our meeting.
Second. With a motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Item four consent agenda is approval of minutes from September 22nd, approval of bills paid, resolution 202515 referring to deferred compensation, resolution 202517 for the FEMA fire program.
May I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items for A, B, C, and D?
Second.
Can I ask one question? Mark, weren't we already on that 457 or something Mission Square? What are we changing?
The broker is ICMA, actually it's Mission Square who's with the International City Managers Association, and we're moving into CAPERS. So that whole plan will move over to CAPERS, which all of our retirement benefits are through CAPERS.
Okay. Thanks.
It's cheaper, by the way. There are savings to everyone participating.
We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Just remember you'll start with your name and your address. You'll have three minutes. When your time's winding down, I'll give you a signal to wrap it up.
Dave Johnson, 1205 South Hunter Second. So my comment is about 98th Street. It's nice, but who's supposed to be mowing the sidewalks and keeping it clean? That's my concern because it's not looking too good right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Johnson, 507 High Street. I just want to say kudos to everyone that was involved with the Potato Fest. I wasn't able to help this year, but I went down and I was very impressed on what was, how the Potato Fest was going. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. No other comments? We will move on to item number five. One of our commissioners might be a little bit later, and so we'll just, if she comes in later, we'll add her, we'll have her go last. And so with us this evening are Commissioners Burrows and Commissioner Stites, and then Commissioner Bynum, I think, will be coming in. Commissioner Burrows, would you like to begin for us?
Well, good evening. Wanted to ensure that I took the invite, and this is one of the rare Monday nights I don't have a commission meeting. So the, I sat on the Public Works Committee along with Commissioner Stites, as well as the Economic Development Committee Chair, and both of those meet on Monday evenings. So it's kept me from attending these meetings and ones in Bonner. So when this opportunity arose, I wanted to ensure that we had an opportunity to come out and visit. And Madam Mayor, congratulations on your being sworn in to the State House. I know, having been there a while myself, I know you're going to find it quite rewarding. It has, it will be an emotional roller coaster to have tremendous highs, challenging lows, but I know you're up to it. I feel we're in good hands. So congratulations on that. I'm here this evening just to basically talk an overview about Wyandotte County and some of the things we've been dealing with. If you've been watching the meetings, you can see that some of them go quite long, quite long, quite long, up until 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. And that's really a sign of, I'll call it a dysfunction opportunity for the public to see us struggle as much. We have a lot on our agenda, a lot of community input. I will state that this mayor, Mayor Garner, has taken it upon himself to ensure that the community has a tremendous amount of opportunity to speak to the commission and communicate to us their needs and wants. But I'm here to talk a little bit about the budgeting process. I chair finance, the Audit Committee, as well as Economic Development, Public Works and Safety. The, there's many challenges. Our community is not any different than yours. We face financial challenges and the needs of the community, the same as many of you do. But I want to commend you on your recent budget and commitment to, I believe, state revenue neutral. The, the revenue neutral aspect, don't let it be the negative fantasy as some people will paint it to be. We can always use more money and spend more money. However, this will encourage you all to sit down and look at your budget to make sure the budget is, those dollars are going where they need to go. It's about prioritization, and we all have different priorities, but collectively through good leadership, through good communication, and through difficult conversation, you will find that there, there's a way to make things work with limited dollars for a period of time, especially when the community is struggling financially. And I, I know that the appraisals and valuations are a big issue. I know right now as we speak, I believe the Senate, Senate President Masterson is going to call him back to talk about property tax, as well as the redistricting and the gender issue. But I believe property tax is going to be one of those that comes forward also in the appraisal process. That will affect what we do in our community and how we look at things, business appraisals, commercial appraisals, as well as housing appraisals. You know, I've had, I had the privilege of representing this area for almost 30 years as an elected official, and I've kept my eye on Edwardsville and Bonner Springs, having lived down in Edwardsville and both Bonner Springs for a period of time. I really have to commend you about your forward thinking, long-term longevity about keeping the community viable. You have a tremendous industrial park. The roads are in good shape. I, I know I just heard about one of the roads being paved. I, I travel these roads over here. I take one day a month to travel part of the community within my district so that I have an understanding of development that wants to come in and do business in our community and conditions of the road, the infrastructure challenges that we have. I know that public service is, is a double-edged sword. Don't let it wear you out. Don't let it blunt your, blunt your edge. I know at times it can be quite a challenge. Please know in the limited amount of time I have left as your commissioner at large, I stand ready to do my part in ensuring that the needs that you have, the communications that you need with the unified government services that you sorely deserve are heard and, and voiced. I know there's two of us that serve on the commission that represent this area, and I actually represent four areas as an at-large until the general, then I represent all of Wyandotte County. It's never my intent to step in and step on the local commissioner. That's their job to, to take the calls of the constituents, all reach out to the city commissioner to see if there's anything else I can do to help. But you have a strong voice in your commissioner from this area that represents you, a former member of all of yours. So I'm just here to maybe answer a few questions. Want to talk about our budget. Our budget started out, started at City Hall at about 340 million. It's now over a half a billion dollars. So in the eight years that I've been there, the budget has grown well over $100 million. So people have questions, where are those dollars going? They always want to see something. You can put all the, all the financing into the ground. If people don't see it, they're going to wonder where that money's going. So infrastructure's important. I know, I think it behooves the leadership of this, this community to work collectively, to identify projects in each one of your districts and ensure that your public and your constituency, that each one of you are connected collectively in this community and that you work in a unified voice to address their concerns. And I know some issues are more important than others throughout the community, but it's really about being able to serve the community and let them see that you as public servants are listening and doing your job and working collectively as a body. I, again, I just want to commend each and every one for the job that you do. I stand ready to help in any way that I can the last two months I'm in office, but I'm not going anywhere. I grew up in Wyandotte County. Wyandotte County made me who I am, like it or not. That's just how it is. But I'll stand for any questions, Madam Mayor, or I'll wait till after the next conference, whatever suits your fancy.
Questions for Commissioner Burrows?
Commissioner, is there conversations in the meeting? I don't pay much attention to your meetings and the UG because they're boring and long, and I don't understand it on the video portion. No, it's pretty good, but the audio portion sucks. I'll just say that, like ours here. Is there very much discussion in there on what some of our problems out here might be of not being able to draw businesses, like some of the vacant land that we have? It seems like we have an awful hard time luring people in here that would bring cash registers with them. Has that ever been any kind of a discussion on the unified government aspect?
Absolutely. And your, your situation is not any more unique than ours outside of maybe on a smaller scale. We have a tremendous amount of vacant property in Wyandotte County. The bad, I know in the inner city, east of 635, when the homes were vacated and/or in need or falling into a form of disrepair, the old, over the years, the old way of dealing with them was they would push them into the foundation and just cover them with dirt, and then we ended up with 45,000, or 4,500 land bank properties throughout the community. And those lots that vacant, people said, we should do something with them. Well, if you look, remember, you know, decades ago, it was a narrow lots, ordinances that you had to have a basement, you couldn't approach 10 or 15 feet distance between the home. So all those ordinance have been, have been reviewed, and there is some movement in Wyandotte County, east of 635, starting at using those smaller lots between the homes as yard extensions so that we don't have to maintain them. I know it's a local unit of government, but we have to mow those lots and haul the trash off. We maintain them. That affects our budget. Where if we extended it into a yard extension or changed the ordinances to allow tiny homes or shotgun homes, or had a type of home that could fit on that postage stamp sized lot, we would be better off. The bad thing is, is we, when you put a slab home on property that you don't know what's underneath it, it becomes quite a challenge. In reference to out here, tax base is a big one, the property tax issue. Dealing with City Hall in our instance has been a challenge. I know Commissioner Stites is co-chair, we co-chair the Business Task Force, so, and I just closed one out today, that we've tried to do what we can to put a footprint, place a template for business leaders, or business people when they come in, they can meet, come to point A and not have to worry about running to point D, E, Z. They can get everything in one stop shop. And we have a template saying this is what needs to be done, these are your P. Those things help considerably when you have small businesses that want to come in and invest in your community. And, and please rest assured, small businesses are lifeblood communities. Our communities were built on small businesses. If we're fortunate enough to land a big business, then it comes to, it comes to point incentives. And then depending on what kind of incentives that are offered, that's where you get the input from the public. It has to be fair and accurate. I hope that answered your question, Mr. Malat.
To, to a degree.
Well, if I could be more pointed, there's just so much information I can give you, and I want to be cognizant of the time you've allowed me to speak. But the infrastructure challenges that we have here, we're east and west, north and south, we have the best highway system in, in the metropolitan area, if not the Midwest, to move traffic. I know we've given, we have a lot of roadway that is being deteriorated by the heavy truck traffic that we have due to the warehousing that is in our community. We have a tremendous amount of truck traffic. It's gotten heavier and larger. Even the state is raising some of its bridges on the turnpike. Madam Mayor, you will see that at times when you head back and forth through the State House, that, that does damage to our infrastructure, and you, we are responsible for that as a city. And the only place you can replace that is either through fees, taxes, business growth, property valuation, all of those play into one. So when it comes to recruiting businesses, I think we have a lot to offer. Our land is cheaper. We have a very good educated workforce provided, they go through our community college to get some of the training. Our community college is very much engaged with our business community. Yeah, I could go on and on, Mr. Malat, about some of the challenges that we have, but I also could talk about some of the advantages that we have over other communities.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Other questions or comments for Commissioner Burrows? Commissioner Burrows, thank you so much for being here this evening. Over the last few years, it's been really encouraging to, to see your, just fighting for, for lower taxes and, and holding, holding the line on taxes for our county. And I can tell you personally, Commissioner Burrows has always had an open phone line or email. He's very responsive and cares deeply about the needs in our community. So we really appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
I would add to that, thank you for the service that you've provided for Wyandotte County.
Thank you for the fact. It's been an honor and a privilege. It's, growing up here, it's my way of giving back. I am who I am because of the very people in this room and in this community. Wyandotte County has been good to me and anything that I can continue to do to ensure that Wyandotte County is out in the forefront. Let's all be champions, the best ambassadors we can be for our community. I know it can be a challenge.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum is here with us this evening, another commissioner at large, Wyandotte County, one of our commissioners. If you're...
Yes.
And I'll be fast. Thank you very much. Melissa Bynum, at large District 1. So Districts, I can just, primarily my, but...
There we go. So the first thing I thought I would share is the rebates and BPU relief. And I know that there are at least some Edwardsville residents, if not all, that do get a BPU bill. So it's relevant to you. We have a utility rebate program that if you do get a BPU bill, you can, you can qualify if you're 65 and over and fall into the income guidelines, which is at the moment 42,600, one applicant per household. And we based that, the commission worked on this in 2023, and we actually made multiple ordinance changes in order to accomplish this. The first one being that we increased that maximum income. And then if you qualify, well, the only other change that we just made was that we just made a change. Well, the next slide is just register of this. Obviously, one thing that I think, I signed up for this, and I talked with you, I talked with you, so whether I can change. The next slide is about our Community Development Disabilities Organization. It is a countywide organization funded on the county side of the budget. The problem is that right now it serves over 750 clients in Wyandotte, but statewide there's 5,300 people waiting for services. This is a very lengthy waitlist. And so we encourage folks that need for service to go in and try to, yes, I know for the service, I'd rate it as quite, unfortunately, and you can see that, causes to provide these services for Wyandotte County residents. The next slide is the Resource Center located at 495. There are a couple of things that do apply countywide, one of which is the huge, as well as mediation. So in that regard, we do have hopes you are able to try to provide the... And on a variety of issues that you can see there, property lines, fallen trees. We get a lot of questions like that. I imagine you might as well, in terms of my neighbor's tree fell on my fence type thing. So just to make sure you're aware that we do have a couple of services countywide in our Neighborhood Resource Center. And then Area Agency on Aging is a countywide service, providing a large variety of services. I do hope that you will encourage your residents to make sure that they check on what senior services might be available through our County Agency on Aging. They do, they do a lot of work for older adults in Wyandotte County, including the list that you see here. And so I would certainly encourage folks to look at the services provided through our Wyandotte-Levinworth Area Agency on Aging. And I'll just keep sliding through those. Secure Transportation, Case Management, Legal Services. Those are all really important topics for older adults. Giving the Basics, they actually work with a nonprofit called Giving the Basics to try to help supply certain things to seniors who have low income. For example, incontinence supplies, if you have any familiarity with that, they can be very expensive. Schick is the Senior Health Insurance Counseling, and then of course the Meals on Wheels Program. They have congregate meal sites at nine locations. Champs is an interesting program, only available through IHOP in Wyandotte County, but seniors can sign up for that and eat a nutritious meal at IHOP for like a $3 donation. So it's an important program. Again, more programs offered through Area Agency on Aging, medical alerts, hearing aids, some level of dental service. They do have a couple of fitness programs that they run through their department. They have in-home services, caregiver support, and then they do a bi-monthly newsletter just to help provide information out to the county. So I do hope you'll encourage your folks to look into the services that Area Agency on Aging has available to you. Couple of, just real quick things here. Nope, I think that's about it. The only other thing I was going to say is, I'm currently working on, my standing committee is looking at trying to raise that income level for those rebate programs that we have available. And I've been working at the mayor's request on, we continue to look at the Board of Public Utilities pilot payment and lieu of taxes. So we will be bringing a presentation to the Unified Government in early November. We were scheduled for that in August, but when the law enforcement officer was killed, the mayor canceled that special session and he rearranged it, so it'll be in early November. The last thing I'll say is, I have a deep appreciation for trying to bring taxes under control. And I congratulate you not only on your revenue neutral budget, but also your successful sales tax votes. That was very exciting for the city of Edwardsville. In 2016, the county side of the mill levy was 38.8. In the budget we just passed, as you know, we went revenue neutral last year, which dropped the mill levy significantly on the county side. For 2024, we adopted a budget with a 33.46 mill levy. The budget we just adopted is a 35.46 mill levy. So comparatively from 2016 to 2025, the mill levy is still three and a half mils lower than it was in 2016. I think it's really important to keep that in perspective, and I'll have any questions that you want to ask me. Thank you so much.
Questions for Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. Thanks.
Commissioner Bynum, thank you so much for being here this evening. We, we appreciate you coming out, and she's one of our at-large commissioners who represents the whole county. Mayor pro tem, both of our commissioners at large are, I believe, for six months on alternate, two years. Okay, half of the, half of the term. And so I believe both commissioners have filled in at that level. So we appreciate your representation of Wyandotte County. Commissioner Bynum, again, is always a friendly conversation and listening to your show. If our committee council ever has questions or concerns, I, I encourage you to reach out to any of our commissioners here this evening, and appreciate your work on pilot. Hopefully, we can visit on that a little bit further. The last commissioner with us this evening is one of our Edwardsville natives, Commissioner Stites, served on a city council for years prior to being elected as our county commissioner for District 7.
Oh, go on. I like hearing about it. Keep going. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak in front of you guys, and it was nice to meet you. It's the first time I've got to meet Doug. Congratulations to the new city council member, and also to Carolyn for her new position. I think what I want to do is start with the question that Garrett had, had asked. Well, I'll start off by saying Chuck Stites, District 7. What was, what was the question that you asked?
Did I ask?
Yes, sir.
What seems to be the problem that we have by not being able to lure businesses and cash registers Edwardsville? It seems like everybody just kind of sidesteps us and goes other directions. Is there some kind of issues within Edwardsville or within the county? Or I just don't, don't understand why we can't lure a McDonald's here somewhere, something up north where the Hard Rock was going to be. I know there's a lawsuit involved in that, but there's other lots up there. We've got a sewer line going up there. You know, we put the sewer around when we put the sewer line in, lost the Hard Rock, and that's tied up in courts, but we've still got other lots up there that are available. And I can't understand why we can't seem to get somebody drawn in down here.
Well, I can't, I don't know that I can answer the why you can't, but here's what I will say. I think it's imperative that you do, right? I mean, so drawing economic development into this, this area, cash registers, bringing in more people, that only helps bring in the dollars to our community, right? That's, that's what we have to do. So I'm not sure that I can answer the why that you're not drawing them, but I think we need to figure that out, but that's collaboration with the county, with, with you guys, that we figure that out. So I'm, I'm committed to, to working on that, trying to help. One of the things that, and if we're going last, a lot of things have already been said, right? But I'm also, I am on the Public Work Safety and EDNF Standing Committee. So Monday nights are, this is a rare, just like Commissioner Burrow said, it is rare that we're off on a Mon, on Monday nights. So I appreciate the opportunity. I'll say that, thank you that I get to serve you guys another four years. My, I'm up for election this year, and fortunately, no one ran against me. Not sure if that's good or bad, but no one, no one elected to run against me, so you're stuck with me for another four years. One of the problems that I think that we have is that there's very little, it's getting better, but there's very little discussion at our county administration with Edwardsville. I asked over and over and over for the last four years. Have you talked to Bonner? Have you talked, Mark knows, Carolyn knows, have you talked to Edwardsville? What their needs are as we present a budget? Which is, we have a city budget and a county budget, right? So, I don't know how it is that we approve a budget, and we don't come out and talk to the other two cities on the county side. I'm not here to hold anything back. I'm just letting you guys know that that's the fact. I never reached out to you guys. We set a county budget, and I'm going to apologize, because that's not acceptable. We raised your taxes. We can talk about how much the mill levy was then and now. Here's what's happened. This year, your taxes are going up because we raised your, we raised, we didn't go revenue-neutral. Taxes are going up. $509 million budget, it's too much. 98th Street looks great. Appreciate it. I know that they were, they were out there doing some re-sodding, I think, that didn't take. So, I do look forward to 98th Street being mode and taking care of it. It is really nice. It's become a bit of a racetrack now, unfortunately. The new asphalt draws people thinking they can go faster now, so hopefully, we can address that. So, one of the things, when I got elected, and I sat right there where Camille was at for six years, and, I'm sorry, Councilman Ed Cox, that I was asked is, seems as if we're underrepresented out in Bonner and Edwardsville. One of the things that I worked on almost immediately was Sci-Fi, getting it brought back. Sci-Fi is a county, comes off the county side of our budget that allows both, all, all three cities, well, actually, all four. There's a little small portion of Lake River that gets some of the money also. And you guys, as you guys well know, that makes a big difference on your guys' ability to fix roads, do infrastructure maintenance, road preservation. We got it this year. Imagine this, the very first thing that came out of our county budget was Sci-Fi. Something that we all complain about. Bonner Springs complains, Edwardsville complains, KCK complains, that we're not taking care of our streets. And look what we did, we take Sci-Fi out. So, I'm going to continue to fight for Sci-Fi, just like the pilot. We've got to get the pilot here in Edwardsville, resolve some resolution on that. What that means, I'm not sure, but we'll, we'll continue to work on it. But going back to what, underrepresented. And so, I started working on a DMV location. You guys all know the struggles that you have if you go downtown or if you go out to 82nd Street to get your car tech. You guys, we want to give the county money, right? To register our vehicles. It seems like we make it so dang hard to do it. I'll read you something real quick that just came out today, and I'm very excited about this. Beginning Thursday, October 16th, 2025, so it's a couple of days, Unified Government Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, in partnership with City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, will open a new motor vehicle renewal, only, only renewals at this time, location inside Bonner Springs City Hall. So, we will, that is something that I have been working on, that we bring a asset out west so that we can relieve some of the congestion at 82nd Street and downtown, where people out here right now can go out, tag their vehicles, and hopefully, make this process a lot easier. I don't know, I don't know the operating hours just yet, or what days. It's kind of a pilot, just to see where we're, what's going to make sense. I'm hopeful that, that it becomes full-time, that we have somebody out there Monday through Friday. I'm looking, also looking at some after-hour shifts at all the locations. And then, also, maybe we need to look at some Saturday, you know, Saturday opportunities for people to get that done. So, with the new city hall here that's coming in, in Edwardsville, I'm thinking, all right, now, now what am I going to try to look at trying to do here? Well, I would sure like to see his partner up, and I'll start working on this, and hopefully, I can get this done in the next four years. And I say me, it's not just me. It's, you know, it's, it's, it takes a lot of us to get this done, but somebody's got to be behind it, driving it. But I would like to see us get a new driver's license location out here. Maybe there's a space in the new city hall that we're able to come in and get driver's license. So, that's something that I'll be in contact with mayor and staff here to see what we can do there. Economic Development, we kind of went over the Sci-Fi, the budget, 98th Street, I got it. Pilot. I'm very proud to represent Edwardsville, Bonner Springs, my district, KCK. I'm one of the only Commissioners, Commissioner Burroughs, as the At-Large. He represents all three cities. I represent all three cities. That's, that's in my district. My district is Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and KCK up to roughly about 78th Street, up north, all of the legends. You're right about the development. Seems to be going north. Buc-E's, it's going to be a great addition to our community overall. But I do want to see us start trying to figure out how we get some, some development on the south side. If there's anything else that you guys want to ask or talk about, I'm here, ready to go.
Where do the discussions go when you don't discuss with Edwardsville and Bonner on the budgetary process?
Your taxes get raised.
And since we're.
They fall in a hole. Nobody talks to you about it. They don't know what your needs are. So, how do, how do we, how do we address those things? How do we address economic development? We don't even know where you guys are going, what directions you're going.
You're outnumbered, in other words.
Left, you're left in the dark.
Right, you're outnumbered.
Good luck.
By sitting on the commission, you're outnumbered.
Yep.
So, what would the solution, what would be a good tactic to fight that?
Vote people out.
That would be novel, wouldn't it? To have people actually show up.
Hold people accountable, hold people accountable when they're asked over and over and over, if they've had communication, as, as other cities that are in our county. If you contacted them, if you had interaction.
Well, when you say vote out and.
Elections matter.
We're voting out here, we're voting for how many persons on the commission? Even if we vote in our people, you're still outnumbered sitting in there, correct? So, there needs to be some kind of a solution for that.
So, it's interesting that you, how it's kind of framed, outnumbered, right? I would like, here's what I take very, very serious, that I am a countywide Commissioner from the very farthest east to the farthest west, and north and south. When I vote, I'm voting for the entire county. Some, some believe that they're only voting for their district. You're a county Commissioner. You represent an area, but you're a county Commissioner. So, I think that it would be, would behoove you to reach out when there are issues to the other Commissioners and have conversation with them, that say, this is what we've got going on, and we would like to have some conversation about it.
I wasn't trying to be controversial.
I don't, I'm way past all that.
Probably, a lot of people have the same feelings.
I'm good with it.
To live out here.
I appreciate the question. People need to hear it.
And you were aware that when we had the grocery store and everything on the north side here, there was at one time a driver's license office in there. And I think it was, you could get a regular driver's license plus a CDL license in there.
And motorcycle, I think.
I think, well, I think that just comes with territory.
Yeah.
I don't.
But yeah, so that's, that's a service that I think that we could, we could push to this area. I know that there's some discussion about, you know, some, how do you generate some sales tax dollars in and around the new city hall, right? And if the more, the more we can get people coming here, then they, they stop, they get their driver's license, they renew a tag, they get their health department comes in once or twice a week to address health needs or whatever that may be, and then, they stop over and grab a hamburger or a drink and head out. That's what we got to do.
That's a really good thought, and I'm glad. I think, so far, I think it's going to be two days at Bonner. I think it was like a Tuesday and a Friday, and then, probably to be expanded upon after that, which I think that's awesome that we can do that, because we've all gone through the driver's license and license plate fiasco with the county.
Yeah.
I got something that might not be on the radar, but Mark Mathies knows it, and this council knows it. KDOT is threatening to reconstruct the intersection between, at 4th Street and 32 Highway. Were you aware of that on the county side? And by reconstruction, I mean closing the highway and digging up the rear first culvert underneath it. For how long, Mark, probably in the neighborhood of a year? So, to have 32 Highway closed at Edwardsville. And Mr. Burroughs said something about the truck traffic that's going on, which is an issue on 32 Highway to me personally, because I live on 32 Highway. And I think it's going to be a horrible thing for the city of Edwardsville, for KDOT to be able to come in and just absolutely close that road. Is there anything that the county is aware of on that, or that they could fight with KDOT on it? I know it took forever to get silent crossings down here, which was started by your predecessor and you, that did so much work to get the silent crossings. Now, Bonner's going to be fighting the same thing up there with their swingster crossing, with the apartments and everything that are going in there, starting a race game about that. But there's a lot of things that are happening out here that I don't know if the UG could actually help with that, or be a liaison with KDOT on those kind of situations.
I don't know that I have heard anything regarding the intersection of 4th and K32. I do know, back when we were talking silent crossing, that we had several meetings, I think you're right here in this next room, that regarding, it was kind of a task force or a group that would, that would meet regularly about that. So, I don't know, but I would be willing to, to assist in that. If there's any meetings that I can be brought into, I would, I'd be glad to be part of them. And if there's any, and maybe the other Commissioners, have you guys heard anything about the closing of it? I don't, not closing, but I do know that there's discussion from, all right, there is discussion from KDOT about additional load work on K32, especially the medians, the safety crossing. I know Quiet Zone has also brought forward some issues, as well as a broad, broad and backbone that we want to try to bring in here, with that people dealing with some of your riding lanes.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I think everyone, if you're traveling east on 32, and you know, they have the north exit or the entrance ramp to the north where 35 closed forever, and I don't know what they did. I mean, they did something on the bridges up north. But if you're sitting underneath that bridge and look at the road or the, whatever the concrete is underneath it, it looks almost dangerous to me. Like, maybe, do they inspect that? How, how much does the county have involved with looking at that? When you have trees growing up through concrete under an interstate highway bridge, it concerns me.
Yeah, so I reached out, I took photos of that, exactly what you're talking about. The undermining of the concrete slabs that come down, and the tree that's growing up through there. And I, I gave them to KDOT and said that this is it, an issue. I know that, if you guys remember back, was it, Mark, was it west or east of 435? When you guys, did you guys work with the county or the city to clean up those medians? You guys had some workers out there assisting with Unified Government? Yeah, yeah. I thought, I thought, and maybe it was just Unified Government, I don't remember. But I sent those, I sent those with that concern just recently, that how, how that honestly doesn't look, it looks unsafe. So, yes, so I, but I don't know. You have a very good advocate sitting next to you that might be able to help with that, that KDOT. That's right. So, but if there's something that I can do, I mean, you more than, well, reach out to me, and I will, I will try to follow up on it and get you an answer. But any of those conversations that you're having, meeting-wise, I think we, we probably should be brought into it. It's kind of goes both ways when we think about the county reaching out to you all about your budget. I think that we need to make sure that that is also, in turn, we get that, that same feedback back on our side, so we know.
I really appreciate that. And I'm not bringing this up to be argumentative or anything, but it's the things that you notice around here. And I want to make sure that our constituents out here do realize that we are aware of these issues, of these issues, and are seriously trying to get something done about it. You know, that we're not just sitting up here, you know, playing, okay, well, we need to do something. I mean, we're actually trying to get things. And, you know, the more help we can get from the step, you know, the governmental steps upward, I think is, benefits us entirely, so.
I think the more arrows you have in your quiver.
Thank you so much.
Well, I will keep you for just a minute. And just, I feel like it would be a missed opportunity. I know you guys have heard me multiple times over the last four years as Commissioner Stites has been quite an advocate of Mayor Garner, and our At-Large Commissioners as well, in hearing the needs of Edwardsville, Bonner Springs, other members of the community outside of Kansas City, Kansas, as our county commission. One thing that was really concerning to me in watching the budget meetings for the county is, not only did they not go revenue-neutral, they took the full increase of the value, the property valuations, and then added two mils on top of that, and kept Sci-Fi out. Please don't feel like this is directed at you, because I know, I know where you stand on it. But how would the county justify pulling resources from us and at the same time, raising our taxes?
And then, get rid of the, that you didn't go revenue-neutral last year.
And so, at our part, you know, you've got it. In our budget of $9 million a year, that over $400,000 is significant to us. That's a, that's a few mils, that's three mils of our budget. That's a revenue-neutral vote in 2024. And so, it's, it's just, it was significant, and it's kind of rubbing salt in it to our community when we're losing investment in our part of the county, and they're taking more tax dollars. And so, I don't want, like I said, I know where you stand on it, but if you could just keep, keep fighting for that, because it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't add up. We are going, where, where are tax dollars going? At least when you went revenue-neutral, at least we're not getting taxed more, but now, we're, our tax dollars, I believe, when you asked the question at the meeting, are, if your home's worth $200,000, Red, you said it was going to go up about $200 on the county side alone. So, in Edwardsville, you can pretty well bet that every single home is going up more than $200 a year, and we're getting less and less services from it. And so, if you just keep that up. The other is if you, of course, pilot, and Commissioner Bynum's helping, hopefully, us work on that as well. And that is that the BPU is adding a pilot to our bill, and then, the money goes straight to the Kansas City, Kansas general fund, which doesn't make any sense for us being taxed by a board we don't vote on. And then, the money going into a different city is taxation without representation. And it's pure.
Not only do you not vote on, you don't have a member out here.
And our county doesn't own it. It's purely Kansas City, Kansas. And the last thing I'll bring up is just that I've been advocating for quite some time, and you found this a little bit ago, is the separation of county business and city business. When the budgets were presented to you, it was, let's raise the full valuation and then add five mils. Surprisingly, county and city needs were exactly the same. Oh, let's raise it, and then we'll add two mils. To me, it seems like we were, it wasn't even, it was an outer thought at best. The needs are evaluated for the city, and then, we'll just do the same for the county and no other community. I would imagine, the size of Wyandotte County, do they have an administrator that runs? We basically have a part-time county administrator, is what it is. Because the no other county in the state of Kansas side with that, do you not have somebody working at least 40 hours a week just on behalf of the county? And so, it just feels like, as Garrett said a little bit ago, the odds are kind of stacked against us there. And so, while we have our county Commissioners here, our At-Large Commissioner, our District Seven Commissioner, just wanted to really encourage you guys to keep, keep fighting for us. Remember that we're out here, and very much, very much appreciate your time and your service to our community. I know it's a hard job, and it's a thankless job, and we get a lot of ridicule more than thanks. And so, we do want to thank you guys for coming out and for representing us.
Well, I'll tell you, as a former lady here, I appreciate it.
Well, I'll tell you, as a former lady here, I appreciate it. It's really vital representing the people of Windup County, especially all of them. All of Windup County.
Thank you very much. And I'll just add as, as Commissioner Seitz has wrapped up, that he will be representing us for four more years. Um, has consistently brought, what about Bonner and Edwardsville? What about Bonner and Edwardsville to the county level? And very recently, we had installed an automatic door at the community center. That was a, a long process to get in place, new tech and that sort of thing. But that is our storm shelter, we have our mobile pantry that serves groceries from there for families in need. We use some potato pesto, it's a, we use it for pork. And if you go to the door and before we had this installed, it was in a wheelchair, with a stroller, with a handful of anything, you're out of luck because that door's not going to open. And so Commissioner Seitz has reached out and said, how can I help with the money that was coming in? Um, I believe it was grant money, Hollywood Casino grant money, perhaps. It's been a while. But that came through and so I want to thank you for that. Um, it's functioning and, and already been a great help, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening, we sure appreciate you all. Um, on to old business, item number seven, consider sanitary sewer connection agreement between the city of Edwardsville and Buckeyes Kansas City LLC.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, you have before you the background information. That I brought this back because I think the substantive form changed enough that you should probably hear it. Lessons learned from previous examples and that we really came out positionally, you know, we said, hey, these are our terms in this negotiation. But as I began speaking with their representatives from Buckeyes, they were ninety-plus percent agreeable. Very, very agreeable, they were concerned about this somewhat temporary nature of the connection. And the way the language was structured, it pretty much said, we could walk up there and turn the valve. And that's a hard way for somebody to do business. And so it didn't seem very fair, so we moved from this somewhat vision that we took to more principled. And my thought was, how do we get to yes here in the sense of, how does it benefit us as well as them? A more permanent connection in, in the language is what they want and of course in actuality as well. And that's where this agreement came to fruition and we certainly recommend its approval. This has been a long process, they kind of mentioned that several times. They're digging holes right now, right? And their groundbreaking is this, they're getting a little bit nervous about submitting their package, making sure they have everything in order. But I think one of the provisions where I thought, you know, a simple connection, yeah, we get some money. But how is it that on our ten-year term, we could have some say as to, as our life changes, we can do these things? And where could we gain something? And that is, we can renegotiate every ten years the terms of the maintenance agreement. It gives, you know, the lifespan of those sewer systems very long. Of course, need routine maintenance and those kinds of things. So if there is some impact to that, we have at least half mechanism to say, hey, this is getting really expensive for us, we need to change this piece of it. And they are agreeable to renegotiate that piece. Uh, they, they, they thought with that, that they wanted to scale back the connection agreement. And, but in the end, I think when you do the math, we actually gain on the long-term of this relationship rather than this one-time thing. So essentially what it comes down to is that we have a ten-year renewable period, it's going to be automatic, but we get to renegotiate the terms of the maintenance agreement and that's by month. Percentages associated with their bill. Uh, I would point out, and this is a great question, is that by way of examples in the contract language, and that's a lower number than you're seeing, I, what I'm projecting here is our maximum payment per year if they, if they utilize their gallons per day and so per month. And that's how we see that, about a hundred and eighteen thousand a year. Less than some, better than others, but they will, I do know provisionally or not, if they need more usage, they're going to come and ask for it and renegotiate the terms. So we, we know that that's there, they're appreciative, are willing to work with them and that sort of thing. So I thought this is going to be a really good relationship. There's no car wash, they didn't have any intention, so they were easily to say, if they do, it's going to be an off-site. So it's not going to be on this particular property, maybe by design, the land log and that sort of thing. In a sense, they said, absolutely not, don't have to worry about that. Uh, in the end, that, that first year, a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus all of the other fees related, we're at two hundred and ninety-three thousand first year and a hundred and eighteen if they use the guaranteed maximum, sorry, the gallons per day maximum rate. So we recommend that we enter into this agreement with these LSCs.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the sanitary sewer connection agreement with Buckeyes Kansas City LLC.
Second.
Consistent with the terms negotiated and incorporated into the final draft.
Second. Give the motion, Councilman Schreiber, second, from Councilman Adcox, little clerk, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you. On to item eight, under new business, consideration and approval of guaranteed maximum price agreement amendment presented by Vogel Anderson for the city facilities project.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, now I can actually use the word guaranteed. Preston Moore is going to come and make the presentation. I have some background, you've seen that and he's approved that background and then we'll get that drafted. So I'm just going to turn it over to you either way. This is about site utilities, by the way.
Seeking to explore underground utilities and the new other scopes of work. Also, thank you, thank you for putting this package together for us to take it out and receive bid for the sub. Um, so again, I wanted to highlight our process to get this information to you. We did split this up into three bid packages for subcontractor market bid on. We had an inflation package, we had utilities package, and then we had an underground microbus primarily. We sent it out to two hundred and twenty different folks through Vogel Anderson bid invite software. We did advertise it on three levels and we had a free bid meeting. Uh, bid day was held on September twenty-fifth. We had eleven bids in all of those three bid packages. We had more than three bidders, I believe there was two of the packages just had three bids. We would have loved to have had more bids on those bid packages, but three is, is always your goal to have so that you can make sure that's valued for that price for that time. So I wanted to recap just a minute because I, I anticipated there may be some questions we'll run overall as we keep mending our contract. So our guaranteed maximum price for the fire station that I presented to you several weeks ago was two million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars versus our budget of three million. And then our guaranteed maximum price for the site utilities tonight is five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight versus what we had originally budgeted in August of this year of five hundred and ten. Now I put an asterisk next to that because I did want to go ahead and say that originally, this was all one project, one package. And so we made the decision based off the timing and schedule to bring these site utilities out and get them purchased earlier so that we can keep moving with the schedule versus the start and stop scenario. Our general conditions that were part of the overall GMP are tied with fine, not necessarily just a percentage of the cost. And so when I originally had budgeted this in August of five hundred and ten thousand versus where we're at now tonight, I actually needed more of the general conditions that were originally part of the large lump sum than I had anticipated in August. The good news is, is that whenever we do come back from that guaranteed maximum price of three, those general conditions are actually going to be. So, so while it looks like we have overspent by a few dollars here, we're really not in that, in that better shape. We have not overspent. I didn't want to go ahead and make that better. And then guaranteed maximum price of three. Uh, touch on schedule real quick, as you all know, the seats, it's right here next to us in parking lot, fire station is underway. It's getting completion in two thousand and six. Uh, obviously, site utility will be coming next and then we just will not actually have the construction. With that.
So action on this one, we need to approve an IR table amendment related to the GMP.
Make a motion to consider approving the guaranteed maximum pricing amendment number two, site utility package with Vogel Anders Construction Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment.
Second. The motion, Councilman Schreiber, second, from Councilman Adcox, little clerk, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Item number nine, governing body to consider ordinance ten ninety-two, rezoning of property located at six fifty South Fourth Street, which is the city hall municipal campus redevelopment.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, you have before you some of the background and some of the planning and zoning material that was already presented and been through the planning and zoning commission. Uh, this does, this introduces that as a governing body vote and this particular one it won't be because there's just more than consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to you. Uh, so it's already been noted as item. This application, all of the fire projects. But everything inside of the, the item. Here. We will still ongoing the process of not achieving the requirement. Other process will be needed. That would be true for the city. I'm not sure how much. I'm not going to summarize all the staff comments on my call here necessarily. But just to summarize, so it would increase the since development, though it is already done C two. Additionally, use such a, these are those areas that are appropriate safe parts of the city. We're proposing a development that might have a line as those. For sure. Certainly, I would recommend sure, although it's a little bit. Essentially, all I have is presentation here that started.
Planning commission have any concerns? So if there are no further questions, we would hear a motion to approve ordinance ten ninety-two, rezoning of subject property as presented as of today.
Mayor, make a motion to consider approving ordinance number ten ninety-two, rezoning of property located at six fifty South Fourth Street, city hall municipal campus redevelopment.
Second. Motion from Councilman Schreiber, second, from Councilman Adcox, little clerk, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Item number ten, governing body to consider case number twenty twenty-five oh three PPN slash FPN, preliminary and final site plan for the property located at six fifty South Fourth Street, which is the city hall municipal campus redevelopment.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, you have the background information and the commission staff report. This is a preliminary final site plan for this campus, this is a vote. So this is very clearly type, last slide. It is a site plan, both preliminary and final. preliminary final. I'm sure most people, the plans, the, 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 structures are proposed, all of the existing. Provided, overall, places, makes it plain officially, the additional apartment spaces shown, landscapes, and provides, or, 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 which are provided around the night, or landscape You speak for the property, the property, the, 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 Kyle, this might be dumb comment, but was there any provisions for PV charging stations?
What they follow along with the, with the, with the, right now, maybe install future base.
I don't know if they. The only time a park is being changed. It's changing, I think.
Foster Finkel Williams, architect, project manager for the project. Kyle did a great job explaining the process that we've been through, taken through the city staff review, as well as the planning commission. I attended that evening and presented to the planning commission and engaged with some good conversation. Ultimately, I think the planning commission was, you know, in agreement with the waivers that were requesting for tonight. I'll take a question.
I did have one question, I don't know if you can answer it, but I was reading, kind of listening, apologize. There was one part you brought up about, about 10 parking spaces facing west, that the concern was like the headlights. But the planning commission decided not to, like, put up a fencing or anything like that, or?
Because tho- those 10 spaces are in a secure PD lot, so they would be only really going in and out of those, either during shift change, or, you know, if they're going out on a call, so.
Not like constantly all night?
Not constantly going in and out, like in a retail scenario, which is what the code is really intending to apply to.
Okay, no, that makes perfect sense, yeah, thank you.
I think the PD backs in a lot as well, so that would help.
True, yeah, that would help.
But yeah, I, that's a good question, to make sure it wasn't like the court side or city council side, you know, that it worked out well that it was the staff. Any other questions from council? Then we'll consider a motion to approve case number 2025-03 PPN slash FPN.
Mayor, make a motion to approve case number 2025-03-PPN-FPN-dash-P preliminary and final site plan for property located at 650 South Fourth Street, the City Hall Municipal Campus redevelopment.
Second. The motion from Councilman Shriver, a second, from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. I don't get to vote often, so.
Surprised you. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, city manager report.
Yes, ma'am, 98th Street, Boeing, it's not ours yet, there's some sod deficiencies, and it helped at one point just to clean it up a little bit, as they were, they have some erosion control measures to go ahead and clean out yet, so they're wrapping it up by our final deal walkthrough. They needed to put the sod in then, and now that the sod has been in, and not the water has had a, has, has, mustered with, stay in, so we have to take possession of it. So, as soon as it's ours, it will be in our rotation. Did clear back some site distance, obstructions, weeds, and that sort of thing, and, right now, it's not totally our responsibility, but we should leave it in a condition that we approve of, first, that sod is very expensive, and we want it to be well-watered before we use it. As far as the K32 meetings, remember, the secretary was here for a presentation for school, he said, this law, not me, but, this is a pool out there, this is a working, working city. It, 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 long ago, did advise that it slated for entirely, all of the meetings, the time after launch, it's just for clarification on Fourth Street, K32, okay, those, sorry. That project is either we double the length, or they get it done, that's really what it comes down to, there, there's a choice, they can keep things open, but it's going to be that way for quite a long time. Those things are failing underneath there, and they have this project slated for maybe spring of '27. So, we may have a number of things happening with the ramps at 110th and I-70, Fourth Street issue. As far as their posed route for traffic overall, is all that commercial motor vehicle, K7 to 70, and around 405, and then back to the other side, K15. So, so far, that would be, so there wouldn't be any commercial motor vehicle going north through town, 110th, or even south unless they're approved to do so. So, that is their plan at this point, with lots and lots of signs, I think they have that plan. But right now, there's been no talk in recent weeks of that project progressing to any level that we've had an update, so there hasn't been any more meetings or anything on it, and they'll let me know when that might happen. That's what I have.
Thank you. Councilman Shriver.
Once again, like to thank, publicly thank Commissioners Bynum, Burrows, and Stites, A for their service for Wyandotte County, and coming here to our meeting on a Monday night when clearly they had a free day, but, and sharing a lot of information, interesting information, and I wonder, I don't know, just thinking about it, how much of this information, area of aging, I don't know if, how many of our residents know those resources are available. I don't know, at some point, it might be interesting to kind of list all the resources that are available to people. Now, getting there is one thing, but I just, I just don't know how, how many people realize what is available for them. Very interesting, the facility in Bonner gonna be able to be your tag out there. Woo! Minor do this month, I'm gonna go out and test it, I'll, I'll bring an update. Well, I got a call, but anyway, that's exciting. Hats off, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody that was a part of the Potato Festival. So many rave reviews, the weather was perfect, I, I, I don't know that anything slipped up, but, and the event doesn't happen like that without planning, long hours, I think everybody, the staff here, the planning committee, everybody involved, it was a huge success, so, and it's nice to hear the feedback from people too, as well. So, thank you to everybody. Trash day is still tomorrow, correct, even though on the holiday? It's not a federal, or not, well, not that, it doesn't interrupt the trash. Gotcha. And is there going to be another, will key item pick up?
Yes.
November?
November 1st.
Perfect, perfect, will they be getting some signs out maybe, or, I'm sure, that's only a couple of weeks. Okay, just so people are aware.
Strategy is the same, as we're, we're putting the hard signs out around neighborhoods, except that's been the first of that.
Sure.
And we're putting it on hot shot and things like that.
And I'll bring it up one more time, I mean, I, I brought it up 100 times, you know where this is going. My marquee sign I've asked about, I know, now with construction maybe gonna happen, so I'm kind of glad we didn't put a permanent, what, up there, but maybe keep that on the radar, council, a marquee sign, I know you've seen them in several cities that have it when you're coming into the city. It, it can list and show upcoming events, that news flashes, whatever the case may be. I know we've talked about it for years, so.
And I think there was some shyness about spending the money right now, location.
Right, I mean, and now we have the mobile one, which is fine, but.
Fourth Street location, we have, we had a couple of options that we explored, one is the city-owned, so in that pit, we could have done that. Then, then if number one were the money, the building started, and we were hoping to get a marquee sign out near that building somewhere, and we actually just talked about this the last 10 days with our architects, so, I think we'll do that as more of a package. We think it's local, I think, I think, people are, where they stop and can look at a sign, we need to put it out there, and our communications about festivals and things, a lot easier than having the sign printed and put it out on the front of the road, and the post, and things like this. So, but I think we'll start that, number one, we gotta figure out what they're gonna do with the K32 corridor, Fourth Street.
Right, right, now with all that going, I'm, I'm just glad we didn't do it yet.
Because, yes, because the two locations would have been directly impacted, so, okay, we're gonna have to move this, take it down.
There's a reason.
So, we should have one at City Hall, and then we can maybe control board those who may be remotely, so we can strategically do that. It's gonna be a little while.
No, I know, I know, I just.
I, I do think that's a really good communication component, that we should really strive to install.
That can has been kicked down the road for years, so, but, maybe for a good reason, so, maybe everybody keep that on the radar, I mean, I, I know the cost is, it is what it is, but, we kind of have three different corridors coming in here, you know, up on 110th, down by Four, you know, it doesn't have to be Fourth Street, but I think we all agree that's kind of the hub right there, so. I think that's it.
Thanks to the commissioners that we're in, I've been wanting that for quite some time, appreciate, got a lot of insight, and I think they probably are gonna carry something back with them, that, from us, and hopefully, that it'll work. On the UT agency, and, or aging, and all of that, I'm getting there, I need to know that, but it's, uh, needs to be a little bit more advertised, maybe on the web, UT website or something, because I don't know how much of that I see, that website is hard to navigate to me, for being a low old guy that's not so high-tech, but that would be a good thing there. And the Bonner Springs license thing is awesome, I mean, I had to have license plates and driver's licenses all renewed, that you, if you need it done by next month, you better get in line today, or you won't get it on your birthday, and that's, that's a serious issue there. Guaranteed maximum pricing, thank you for that, that helps quite a bit. I wanted to commend, Mark Mathies did a presentation at last week's Chamber of Commerce luncheon for the board, and for the, some of the attendees at the, at the commission, at the Chamber Luncheon, he did an excellent job, he, you know, he talked about the street improvements that are going on in Edwardsville, and they spent considerable time on the tax issue, that, you know, where we went revenue neutral, and, which was commended, maybe criticized a little bit, but commended, but I have my point on that, everybody else got theirs. But the residents that were here from Bonner Springs were really impressed with the City Hall facility that's coming along. Mark did an excellent job of presenting that to them, so I just wanted to make sure that he got the credit for that. He is a natural-born entertainer, I want everybody to know that, so, I think they will probably ask him to come back again sometime. And then the last thing I wanted to say is the Von Trent organization in Bonner Springs is looking for somebody to serve on their board, if there would be somebody in the Edwardsville area that would be willing to get on that board and work with the Von Trent, let me know, and I can throw your name in the hat with the board directors on that committee, so, with that, I am done, thank you very much.
Councilman Everhart, not coming. Councilman Mullin?
Okay, well, we will wrap up this section of the meeting, wanted to take just a moment to thank our planning committee, our staff, our community, there were so many hands on deck for the Potato Festival. It was just amazing how many people showed up to the Potato Festival this year, I couldn't believe it, I just, I just, there was a couple of times, I was just, just, look at, look at this, I mean, the Makers Fair, there was a time you can hardly get around the booth and see everything, so many people were inside, we had vendors sell out of stuff and leave, we had a food truck that sold out of food, great, great, uh, great opportunity to bring the community together. I won't go into all the details of everything that happened that day, but it was a great success, so, just wanted to thank staff, thank the, the committee, there was a lot of work going into it, and people are already asking about what's, what's the date for next year, so, thank you all for, for being a part of that. We're gonna start our, just work session roundtable here in just a minute, and happy Yes, it is. Absolutely. Open meeting, open to the public, all of our meetings are open to the public. Thank you.